I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to, um, certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements established in Virginia law, that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convene in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? And Ms. Serza?
This is Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Um, moving on to item three point one, Ms. Serza, would you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers is absent. Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here. Item three point two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I approve of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Moving on to item four point one, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tonight's report is filled with accolades and honors for our students and schools. First, congratulations go out to the Envirathon team from Jamestown High School. These outstanding young men and women earned first place on the 2019 National Conservation Foundation Envirathon. They competed against fifty-three teams from across the United States, Canada, and China for the top honor. As part of the week-long Envirathon, the Jamestown students demonstrated knowledge on soil and land use, ecology, wildlife management, and forestry. Among the highlights of the week were student-created presentations based on the theme agriculture and the environment, knowledge and technology to feed the world. We will, of course, welcome Jamestown's Envirathon team at a future meeting for a special school board recognition. Next, we are celebrating two young men who worked diligently all summer to earn their high school diplomas. Dennis Jacobo and Damian Graythen, or Grantthen, celebrated their accomplishment last week during our summer school graduation ceremony. Their families were understandably very proud of their sons, but also grateful to the incredible teachers and administrator who supported these young men on their journey toward earning their diplomas. I too want to offer my thanks to all of our teachers and staff, especially our summer school teachers and administrators, for all they do to teach, mentor, and encourage our students. Summer school students in grades K three eight were encouraged to pick up a good book and read this summer. Thanks to the friends of the Williamsburg Regional Library Foundation, students receive free books as part of an annual giveaway. Reading is a wonderful activity any time of the year, but especially during the summer months to avoid summer sliding, learning slides. And to quote Dr. Seuss, "The more that you read, the more things you will know. The more that you learn, the more places you'll go." Also, I want to encourage you to go to the school division website for back-to-school news and information, wjccschools.org, and each school website are redesigned to make it easier to find forms, announcements, and all the important school supplies listed. Since the pages are relatively new, we are still continuing to add information each day, so I encourage everyone to visit the website often for updates. And as some of, as we already know, our website has been totally redesigned, and so we encourage everyone to go and see the new design of the website. I do have one other announcement this evening, or introduction. Uh, Mr. Shawn Walker has joined us as Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership for Elementary. Welcome, Shawn. Mr. Walker brings four years of experience in a similar role in Virginia Beach, uh, over twenty elementary schools. He brings lots of valuable experience to the position, and we're delighted to have him on board, so, so welcome. That's all the announcements for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Uh, the next item is five point one, citizens' comments, and I don't believe we have any cards filled out. So, moving on to proposed agenda items six point one, the budget calendar for FY twenty-one.
Madam Chair, uh, Ms. Ewing is going to present the annual budget calendar that we present at this time of the year every year.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Heron. In your board packet this evening for your review is a proposed budget calendar for the coming year. We're proposing a similar timeline that was used this past year, and I will highlight some of these dates for you now. On October first, we will present the capital improvement committee recommendations to you. At the October fifteenth meeting, the hearing on the CIP plan. November twelfth will be the school board's prioritization of the CIP recommendations. November twenty-sixth will be another public hearing on the CIP plan. Number tenth would be the adoption of the capital improvement plan. And in January, we'll move into the development of the operating budget. We are proposing the same format as last year for the budget workshops, with the first one being held on January seventh prior to the regular board meeting. And the second budget workshop on January twenty-first, again, prior to the regular board meeting. A pre-budget public hearing is also proposed for January twenty-first to gather input from the community. And then February eighteenth will be the initial presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget. March third will be a public hearing on the proposed budget. March thirteenth is proposed to be a joint meeting with the county board of supervisors and city council. March seventeenth would be the school board's approval of the operating budget. And May twenty-sixth will be the projected date of when we'll have information back from James City County and the city to be able to finalize our budget for fiscal year. Questions?
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ewing, the March thirteenth joint meeting, is that how, is that firm?
It is not. I just used the dates that were used last year, so that would be tentative. We would have to, I'd have to work with Ms. Serza.
Could we note that, just so that
Yes.
we're not getting ahead of anybody?
Sure.
Um, and speaking of tentative, I really appreciate the, um, tentative dates that are noted both in March and May. Last several years, we haven't had to use them, but it's nice to not feel rushed and have those as a backup should we ever have to. Hopefully, we never will, but I really appreciate that. So, my other question has to do with something that emerged out of the liaison committee last year, which is a request, um, from the county and the city to have a, a, a special joint meeting for just capital, um, projects. So, last year, if you recall, we had actually two joint meetings. And so, uh, I don't really have an opinion either way, but I thought that this would be a good time to kind of just that out and see whether or not we want to work toward that end so that one focuses on capital and one focuses on operating. Well, are there additional thoughts to that point?
If it works for the
It did work nicely last year, is my recollection. Ms. Young?
If it works better for our funding department, so probably be
Work, work that into this, Ms. Just work that into the Are there additional thoughts?
Order, I noticed that, yes, I'll fix that.
So, we'll work to solidify the dates for the both joint meetings and, uh, seek to see if that's what's the desire of, uh, owners as well.
So, that CIP budget meeting would probably be February, March. Oh, wasn't it?
The fall, because I, I was not here for that.
Oh, you're right.
Yes, I think we met before the board approved.
It'd be nice to reach out to the audience, try to firm up those dates, and if they decline, if they feel like they don't need one this year.
Particularly the fall, the springs might be
So, moving on to item six point two, this is authorization to permit city-county use of school buses. This is
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another annual, uh, item we bring to the board. Mr. Snipes is going to take us through it this evening. Thank you, sir.
Cheers, school board members. Dr. Heron, um, tonight, as Dr. Heron said, is an annual request for authorization of school buses by, uh, James City County, um, as well as other state agencies. This is an, again, an annual, uh, request that we provide to you, asking for your permission for them to use that. As a state, state law does allow us to, um, have them use our buses.
There are questions? Young?
How often are our buses used by?
Well, um, they're used by Parks and Rec during the summer a lot. Um, so, they're the main, um, state agency that would use our, um, or government agency that would use our bus. Sometimes they are used for, um, special events. Um, we recently had our buses used for a special event, um, for James City County, through Jamestown, Yorktown. So, it depends on if it's a state agency, but it's not often, but the most often is Parks and Rec.
Um, just one comment that the costs associated with the use of buses by an entity other than ourselves is paid by the appropriate governing body and not by us.
We bill them. Are ours
Yes, they are our train school bus drivers, or someone at least that has to have a CDL. By state law, they have to be, have a CDL to drive.
It's not necessarily our drivers?
No, sometimes the Parks and Rec staff, we train their staff to, to, to transport their students during the summer.
Okay. No additional comments? Moving on to item six point three, award RFP nineteen dash one four one two zero contract to purchase custodial supplies.
Again, thank you. Again, um, periodically, uh, James City County purchasing reviews, um, our service acquisitions and warrants establishment of a contract. Purchasing recommends that a contract based on the combined volume, um, that is useful to any WJCC location, um, may result in, that may result in savings of time or money, um, be put into a contract agreement. Um, it's been determined that there were sufficient purchases made through the school year to establish a contract for custodial supplies. Um, the big documents for this project were made available to contractors on May thirty-first and returned on July third. And the bid package will be reviewed by a committee tomorrow as a matter, Thursday as a matter of fact, and the bid will be awarded to the vendors that submit the lowest and most responsive and responsible bids, um, as provided.
But my question is actually about this item and the next two as well.
Okay.
So, is this part of an ongoing effort to, I think you said this earlier, but to consolidate and bundle, if you will, our purchases?
Correct. Well, um, any purchases that are over a hundred, combined volume purchases that exceed a hundred thousand dollars, we have to, to bid for.
So, functionally, if I understand what's going on, we're transitioning these items from regularly being part of our monthly, uh, monthly, uh, financial report, as embedded as kind of an FYI, to a board, as a separate agenda item, board approving contracts that can be multiple years because of bundling it saves time and money.
Best person to answer that is Ms. Ewing, uh, just in terms of a change in process. Annually, from my understanding, the contracts don't go above a hundred thousand dollars, which is the board threshold. But over a period of time, if they do, we now have to go through the R F process to do them. Ms. Ewing, is that correct? Firm.
So, is this just a new process driven by us, or is this a new rule?
A new process driven by the county. But it also does lend us by and par when we go out for bid.
Currently states and has stated for some time that any purchase over one hundred thousand has to come to the board for approval.
But you're transition, you're shifting the per, from this being part of our monthly payroll, our monthly financial report, because usually the last couple pages have a list of these types of things that are under a hundred thousand, just as a form
Right, there's a purchase order report for any PO issued over twenty-five thousand that's included.
That would
That will, that will remain, so as purchase orders are issued for these types of things, you'll still see those. But before we can go into this contract with the vendors, it has to be by the board for a hundred thousand.
Purpose is to
Yes. More efficient than
Moving on to item 6.4, award IFB number 19-14125 HVAC filters for WJCC public schools.
I could stand up here and say ditto from the previous, previous agenda item, but the same premise applies. This will be a combined volume that will exceed $100,000 over the course of the contract.
I've seen so many filters listed in my life, or so many varieties, but I, I did have a question. How often do, I mean, I assume this is for classrooms, buildings as well?
This is for all filters, for our HVAC units, in particular, specifically, if you wanted to look at, it's an HVAC unit, in this building, in this room, we would put a filter in. So yes, it's for...
And how often are they, they changed?
It's, we have a preventative maintenance program. I could get that for you. I do not know different type of units, so they are changed at different intervals. We don't have all the same type of HVAC units at all of our schools.
Sure of that, but I'm just curious because of issues that arise when, I know you do things well, so it was just a matter of curiosity.
I can get that for you. List of filters are changed out when, again, different type of units, you know, they require different, because they're different sizes, they're different, variable flow units, they're different.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. But you don't need to do that.
Okay.
Please don't give me that.
I think the key is that it's on a preventative maintenance cycle, so they are changed regularly as needed.
Okay.
Okay, unless additional comments about the HVAC filters? Moving on to 6.5, 2019-2020 CNS food and consumables purchase?
Yes. Jane Haley is also here to discuss this and to answer any questions. In July, Ms. Haley was in front of you to ask for something similar. We've come back because there are two additional contracts that we would like you to approve that have exceeded the threshold of $100,000. Both of these contracts are on a five-year contract. One contract with First Colony Pizza is in year, the last year of the contract, so it will be $192,974. And the Coca-Cola bottling consolidated contract is a five-year contract, but we're in year, it will be four years remaining on this contract, which you are approving an amount of $3,6,800. Questions, Ms. Haley?
Ms. Cook?
Thank whoever provided these samples.
Questions?
So, Ms. Haley, first of all, I'd just like to congratulate you on your recent award farm-to-table work.
Thank you.
Incredible, the taste, and the try-days. And I'd also like to commend you for the scratch cooking that you and your team, you really are bucking the trend by not outsourcing, by really making a member of the school of, and, and providing, you know, it's, 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 it's the hard work to provide, provide scratch cooking, so doing that.
Their staff does a great job.
They do, they... Wonderful. But I do have a concern about the Coca-Cola, purchasing from Coca-Cola. So could you talk to us a little bit about what you purchase from Coke for sale to the students?
From Coca-Cola, we have, I think it's about 58 items that we purchase in total. I'm not going to list all 58 for you, because that might be a bit much, but we purchase water, Dasani water, as well as vitamin water, there's some Smart Water, we have Power Aid, which is all the zero, as example down there. We also purchase some diet sodas or zero calorie sodas. And then those are all in only the high schools. In the middle schools, we also purchase regular Dasani water, and then we also purchase some Minute Maid juices, an assortment.
And so it's all sugar-free?
In the high schools, they would be the sugar-free, and the, the juices would not be sugar-free, and they don't have to be sugar-free.
They're 100%.
Correct.
And so, and they're all, of course, USDA approved?
Yes, everything that we're purchasing is USDA compliant.
So can you remind me when the USDA shifted? Because I think we used to not sell soda in our cafeterias, so can you remind me the timeline?
That is, that is correct. According to our records, 2016-17 was the school year that we, that they, I believe they might have shifted a little bit sooner, but in 16-17 was when we started selling.
So I, I have, because sugary drinks cause health problems in our country, and we have a lot of health problems that can be directly related to that. I don't support the sale of sodas in our school, because even though these are sugar-free, I'm concerned with the fact that they are connected to sodas that do have sugar. I also don't like that we sell caffeine in our cafeterias. I don't like that there's artificial sweeteners in a lot of these drinks, because I think a lot of research suggests that's not exactly great either. So because of that, I can't support the purchase of those items, and, you know, again, I commend you for your work, but we used to not sell this stuff, a lot of it, and I wish that we would go back to that. I'm better off, but I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more about how much the selling of sodas, in particular, finances.
The sodas that were sold in the 2018-19 school year accounted for 4.71% of our allo card sales.
That is? So previously, before the 16-17 school year, that was just money that we were doing. I'm presuming that we profit half of that, so if it's $46,000 of sales, we're probably spending $23,000 on...
Probably. I, I didn't bring that exact number, but that's probably a good estimate.
So we're probably, so, so before, prior to that year, we were just doing without?
Correct. They, they did not replace anything that was generating them.
Additional comments or questions for Ms.? Thank you. So moving on to item 6.6, revised policy JN Appendix A student fee schedule for school year 2019-2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, again, an annual piece that we bring to you, and Mr. Paulo's going to take you through the revised stu fee, student fee schedule this evening, and just present a few slides to put it in context, to talk about some of the changes that we've made.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. As Dr. Heron said, each year, we present an update on policy JN Appendix A student fees for the upcoming school year for your consideration. This year, we have several changes that I'd like to make you aware of. First, based on feedback we have received, we have reformatted the document to make it easier to read and to provide clarity regarding the fees associated with courses. Additionally, we have eliminated fees for world language workbooks, as we will be proceeding with an RFP for resources for all world language courses, similar to the one that we conducted for K-12 English Language Arts Materials. We're in the process of rewriting all world language curriculum documents at the moment. We're also eliminating the fee associated with econ, personal finance, as this is a graduation requirement for all students. There have been no increases in the remaining fees. And as in the past, you'll recall that driver's ed fees are set by the VDOE in September and will be communicated to students in their driver's ed classes. In order to provide equity for all students accessing materials associated with courses in which there are fees, we're making sure that students and families are aware of the fee waiver process, and there will be multiple ways in which these forms can be obtained. You'll see that information regarding fee waiver process will be provided to students in class syllabi. Fee waiver forms will be made available at open house. Printed copies of the forms will be available in class during the first four weeks of school, and links to fee waiver forms will be available on all middle and high school websites. Finally, we're taking specific steps to improve equitable access to programs for all students. In the 2020 Program of Studies, we will have information regarding fees associated with courses, as well as links for waiver forms embedded in the digital version. And ParentView has the ability to show fees associated with courses when students enroll, so that parents can see when they log into the system any given time, their outstanding fees and fees associated with courses. We're starting to build this module to use in the future and expect it to be ready for the 2020-21 school year. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to put this down so you can hear me clearly. Is there a way for the, on ParentView, for that link, that they would actually be able to pay for the supplies online?
Ewing to come up and answer that?
Working on to get the module implemented for online payment.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I applaud your work on this, and particularly removing the fee associated with required courses. I think that's the right thing to do. But I'd like to understand a little bit more about how this works. If student qualifies for free and reduced lunch, do they automatically qualify for a fee waiver?
Do they have to apply for it, fill out the paperwork? I believe with View, they will not even be charged for the fee. It won't even appear. It's not only students that are on free and reduced lunch that we are looking at fee waivers. Each of the individual schools will accept fee waiver forms and also make arrangements with students who are suffering hardships. So it's not limited to just students that are on the free and reduced lunch list.
As part of my concern is that we know when kids get to high school, they don't apply to free and reduced. So is the form, can just a student fill it out, or does it require a parent's signature?
We're in the process of revamping the form, and so that might be one of the things that we look at to, to add in there. You know, we like to have the parent's signature in there to verify that there is, in fact, a hardship.
But so it's possible if a child is enrolled in a class, classes that have multiple fees, that they could have to fill out this form multiple times? Is that in a semester or a school year?
Theoretically, that's possible, and I think we should look into filling it out one time and then having it in a database. I can definitely look into that.
That's a, because I think that, that kind of administrative burden can cause people to just avoid the situation altogether. So I'd like to, I, I think that when you, when you think about the, putting yourself in someone's shoes, it would be good, I think, to recognize that there might be a lot going on in, in those families' lives, and so maybe making the burden, reducing the burden to the extent possible. And can you give us a sense of how much, and I know this isn't the budget, but the public doesn't have that handy, and I, how much money we're talking about with all these fees? How much revenue is generated by these fees at any given...
I can't tell you the total amount, because it depends on enrollment. I did pull the numbers for world languages and econ, personal finance. World languages is around $15,000. That's the total amount of money that we typically take in, and econ, personal finance is $11,500.
So that roughly $27,000 total, we can, our budget can, we can find the money to...
Yes, we can, out of instructional materials and the curriculum instruction budget.
I may have some more, but let me...
Oh, questions?
So you mentioned the world languages, and you're putting out RFPs, and that, so are there, will there be resources for the kids who show up in a month for those world languages?
Yes, there are resources.
Wanted to make sure of that.
I have a question with regard to the school bucks and the convenience fee. So will that, are we looking at eliminating that with the module and the ability to pay through View?
Once again, Ms. Ewing is going to come up?
It's something we can look into. We'd have to determine how much that would be in budget if it's...
And what is, how much is that?
It is $2.50.
And then I was just curious to, this is probably from Ms. DePaula, I mean, a lot of the fees are obvious, where those dollars are going to, if it's a band fee for an instrument or for a uniform, but for the public's knowledge, for the parking fees? What is, where does that money?
I'm going to have to ask Dr. Worley to come up for that, as it is a school-based.
So typically, the parking fees go into student activity funds. I do know that, in my experience as a principal, part of that money was sent back to the school division, and I'd have to get Ms. Ewing to say where that went. Team effort.
50% of the parking fees that are collected is part of our overall revenue stream operating fund. I don't have the information.
That would be nice. And so the same is true then for the athletic fees?
Athletic fees do come... We collected approximately $92,000 in athletic fees.
I have a follow-up question on that. By athletic fees, what, what do you mean by athletic fees? Is that just to...
It's just the dollars for the high school particip...
Oh, okay. So 100% of that goes back to, that doesn't stay with the school?
It does not. It's part of the overall general operating fund budget.
Eventually, that's, they get the money back when we buy new band uniforms and we...
Correct.
Absolutely. Purchase, yes, okay.
Cook?
Yes, one of the things that I've always been curious about, if you take the ethnic makeup of a, of a school, for instance, or of the division, for that matter, and then also look, for instance, at economically disadvantaged kids, and then you compared those numbers with the numbers that participate in athletics, or the numbers that participate in performing arts, or any other sort of fee-based, that I, I suspect that's skewed, that, that fewer, a smaller percentage of economically disadvantaged kids participate in perhaps the performing arts or sports. And that could be because their families, you know, they need to work, and they can't do the after-school stuff, but it also could be that we are creating barriers through fees and... And so just, that's something that I've always been curious about, whether or not these after-school fee-based activities reflect our student populations. I hope that we, over time, work toward that end, because part of, part of the school experience is not just showing up with, between cells, it's also creating arts and through athletics, and I'd like to see more participation for disadvantaged kids and ethnic minorities.
Thank you. That's a question. Ms. DePaula? Okay, moving on to action items. Item 7.1, personnel actions.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are there none? Ms. Sarza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Aye again?
Didn't say aye.
Zombie.
Aye.
At your vote?
I counted twice.
Item 7.2, authorization of signature in absence of superintendent. We discussed this at the July 9th meeting.
Madam, oh, sorry. Madam Chair, I move that we authorize Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, and Dr. Corey Murphy, Chief of Staff, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 15th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Question? Are there none? Ms. Sarza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Zombie.
Aye.
Item 7.3, non-resident tuition rates for 2019-2020 school year. This was discussed at the July 9th meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the tuition rates for non-resident students for 2019-2020 school year in the amounts of $10,539 for basic regular education and $434 for basic special education.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Zombie.
Aye.
Item 7.4, Approve the 2019-2020 Meal Price Increase. This was discussed July 9th with Ms. Haley.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the proposed increase of the 2019 to 2020 lunch and breakfast prices by 5 cents.
Second.
Question? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Zombie.
Aye.
And item 7.5, 2019-2020 CNS food and consumables purchase.
Madam Chair, I move approval to issue contracts to the following vendors for child nutrition services, food and consumable purchase orders, purchases under existing cooperative agreements, Flowers, Hershey, JL Culpepper, Pet, Riverside, and Trident Beverage.
Thank you, Sersa.
Second.
Question?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Zombie.
Aye.
Moving on to item 8.1, Board Member Comments. Mrs. Taylor?
First of all, I want to congratulate the two students that graduated at the summer school graduation. It was an honor to be there and to hear about, one of the young men had already was going into the Marines, and not too many days from now.
August 26.
Yes, very soon. And the second thing was, is I had the opportunity to attend student presentations at Matoka, and I saw Mr. Paula there. I was very impressed, first of all, with the ELL class where they were, actually, the students were presenting in English, all the things they had learned that summer, they were younger students, that was fun. And then the other one was that there were students that had made the perimeter of geometric shapes, and then they had programmed a little robot called a Sphero, she's, she's sitting there, she's agreeing with me, so I'm getting this right, to follow the perimeter of these shapes. It was so much fun, and these children, these children were just, they did a wonderful job presenting, but it was just so much fun to see that that was one of the main activities that they had this summer, and they had learned a lot about math and programming, so that was another privilege. I had this opportunity to participate in this summer, but was very proud of those students. They did an amazing job.
I would also agree with Mrs. Young about summer graduation, and I really enjoyed participating in that and talking to those two young men. I also attended the first thing on WJCC Coaches Night. It was good to see all the coaches together, and Coach London from William &amp; Mary giving them a rousing speech at the beginning to get them all excited, but it's good to see all the coaches get together and get them in one place and where we can give them education and from the school system's standpoint, all at one time and in the same voice, so I thought that was really good. As an aside, there is also an article in the Washington Post today dealing with surveys of teachers. I would, I would say that it's a good read, we should, I'll, I'll put it on my Twitter page by this evening, but it was very interesting talking about the climate of teachers in the United States, and there was very, you know, I thought some very interesting points that, that last year was the most labor-active year strikes by teachers since 1986, I think. There were, there were more teacher labor issues, and there was talks about funding not only of salaries, but funding of schools, and so that would be, that would be school buildings, that would be assistance, that would be all those things that make the climate of the school, and some concerns that are amongst the, amongst the teaching population. It's also interesting too that not too many years ago, the teacher salaries were pretty much consistent with other professions that required college educations, and now their, their metrics were that they were 17% behind those grade, those, those other levels now. So, so there's, there's some things building in the, in the teaching professions and how we fund our, fund our schools that's coming, so I would just recommend everybody go look, go, go look at that article, because I thought it was very interesting today.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I would like to just report on the WJCC Foundation. I'm on the committee that does programming and marketing, so we will be having our, we have selected our fall event. It's going to be on Wednesday, October 16th, and it's going to showcase War Hill High School. So I just, it'll be after school, so that people can come in the community and actually see one of our high schools and maybe check out, they'll have the opportunity to see some of our recent grant award. The teachers will highlight some of their, their grant awards, and then also we'll just offer some kind of tours of some of the, the more heavy technology aspects of War Hill High School. So I just wanted to let everyone know about that.
Ms. Hummel. I just wanted to echo again how privileged I was to accept the award for SHIP on behalf of the Food for Thought program with VSBA, and so I'm looking forward to attending some more try days at our schools. I know that we're growing it into the middle school, it's exciting that it's at all of our elementary schools, but the folks at VSBA were very impressed with the work that our division did, and so hopefully we'll be featured in a VSBA newsletter in short order, so just wanted to give a shout out again to SHIP for that. And I do always enjoy attending the summer graduation. It's very special that we're here to celebrate all of our students. And a shout out to all the folks who've worked to create our new website. I've been there multiple times. It's very easy on the eyes, so encourage the community to go check it out. Things are in different places, so there's a learning process, you kind of, but, but very intuitive, and so you can find things easily. And then just wanted to thank our administrators and teachers who are getting ready for the new school year, which is torching. So moving on to our meeting schedule and upcoming events, which is item 9.1. We've got a policy committee meeting on August 14th at 8:00 a.m. here in the annex. And then upcoming meetings, we have closed session on August 20 at 6:00 p.m. in the, at Stryker, followed by a regular meeting at 6:30 in the city council chambers. Closed session on September 3rd, which is the first day of school here in room 309 in the annex, followed by a work session at 6:30 here in the annex. So the agenda for the next meeting will have, this will just roll over, our proposed items, action items, unless there are additional comments or thoughts with that. I think this.
School spotlight, no.
Correct. This meeting is adjourned.